I'm wondering if people need to be in a queue, who's got something they want to share.
Yes.
Betty has one, Emily has one, anybody else? Hi. Chris has one. All right, Betty, take it away.
Well, first, I'll wrap aboard, Matt. And a big thing that's coming up, we had a, we're going to have a public hearing on burning, and they're about whether people can burn outside the city limits and within, in the urban growth boundary. There are people who have large acreage who want to be able to burn their debris. And that is something that people can come and speak to, they can write, or they can come and speak before our meeting. Our meetings are second Thursday of the month. And some people think that there should not be any burning, and others think that if they have large acreage, they shouldn't have to pay to have their debris hauled away. So that's a big thing that's coming up. And we finally had a meeting about, some information about car automobile emissions. Although we are not in violation of air, clean air standards, some of us think that we should be cleaner instead of waiting until we need to, till we have to do something. And there are now some kind of, there are some little contraptions that make it really easy to test the emissions that, and some auto repair places have them, and some auto shops, and some gas stations, and there are a lot of ways to do it voluntarily, but the city could require testing if we wanted to. And I think we, personally, I think we should consider that. We still don't have another, we still have a board vacancy, I think.
Put that in my items of interest.
Okay, okay. And big thing that's bothering people in my neighborhood is East Amazon. They plan to get rid of the parking on East Amazon. And it's really, the businesses there are very much opposed, the residents are very much opposed. The idea is, the plan is to make a two-way bike path on East Amazon. We already have one way, it's just a temporary strike, but, and there's the other way on West Amazon. And it's would be very possible to, and since the repaving is going to include bridges across Amazon Creek, it'd be very easy for people to, for bicyclists to go one way and cross when they want to get to the other way. And would help, there's the auto repair business which needs this, the parking space, mozzies and hideaway need the parking space on the streets. And residents who have narrow driveways feel that they wouldn't, not only do they need parking on the streets, but it would be with a wide bike lane, double bike lane, it would be more difficult for them to park out into tra, back out into traffic. So I hope it's possible to change that. I've written to Public Works and, and maybe the Assistant City Manager can let me know whether we can change it, but that residents are very concerned.
Hi.
And I am too.
That's probably-
What's the time? Oh, I'm up-
I've lost track. It seems like it says three.
Did that time, was that three minutes?
It went through and it's reset, yeah. Let me, we'll go around if we-
Okay, I want one more thing, a second time.
Okay. Emily?
Thank you. I went to the McKenzie Watershed Council Meeting last week. They are continuing to have some really great educational opportunities and programs for the schools there, especially counting the salmon. They showed the results, we had a speaker about the results of a thinning study and how different thinning affects the streams. And the program for, for students just got the donation of a bacteria analyzing machine, that's not what it really is, from the metropolitan waste. And it's really going to help them a lot, and it's worth a bunch of money, so thank you to them. Monroe Park is experiencing an inundation of problematic activity, especially later in the evening. Had an emergency meeting on Saturday, I was there, Chief Kearns came, and the Watch Commander and a couple of people from Parks. It was a good brainstorming session, but just thought I'd let you know that things are getting pretty wild over there. A lot of troubles with campers and RVs, and of course, I hear the other side from the homeless advocates, so it's kind of messy. And the Human Rights Commission met last Tuesday, we finalized work plans, talked about the dog ban, they don't like it, neither do I. The biggest subject was DACA, both supporting it with a resolution, but more importantly, they asked us to put our money where our mouths are, and I'm going to put a motion out at the 7:30 meeting for us to put $10,000 for DACA applications. That's it.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of catch up. I attended the Tascates West Economic Development District Meeting in Albany. What's significant there is that's something that ElCog is deeply involved in, they work with the cog up there. And they're talking a lot about a coordinated economic development effort for the region, where they will, it's not like one-stop shopping, they realize that that probably has a lot of impractical aspects to it, but at least a way to provide consistent service between all the different economic development activities, so that if you call in, you'll be directed to the right people. It's kind of like a 2-on-1 for economic development, where they can have that information available, and then get you to the right folk, because that seems to be the critical thing, both existing businesses and prospective businesses. And what was nice about it was while I was there, there was a lot of recognition of the things Eugene is doing around broadband, economic development, and a lot of the other things they're doing, which then moves into the MX ribbon cutting and the kickoff of that service, which occurred last week. It's in, it's primarily in my ward, although it does move all the way downtown, so it covers some other wards as well. Great effort, the Director of ODOT was there, a number of other folks, and when it was, it was, it was really a nice event. Which then reminds me that last night, I attended the dinner for Square One Housing, which is Emerald Village. It was a great event, the Governor was there and spoke, as were a number of our Oregon delegation were there, and county commissioners, and I, I had a chance to represent the city. But former Mayor Piercey was there, since she had been actively involved. Great event, lots and lots of support. Square One is fitting right into that continuum of housing, so it's a really an important step, it's a pilot program. And then the last thing I'll mention is, this Thursday will be the ElCog meeting, their regular monthly ElCog meeting, where we will talk about some of the issues that I've already mentioned, and also, we'll begin to start planning for the ElCog Recognition Dinner, which will happen in February, and I'll get more information to you.
Great, terrific. Alan?
Yeah, I reported on Sustainability Commission and Fairmount Neighbors Meeting I attended. Sustainability Commission, very successful retreat, hammered out working agreements, because we had about, about four or five new people, and a work plan, and now we're, and we're working through the work plan, doing assignments. And I think the work plan comes to the council in the fall for approval. And the four areas are the Climate and Energy Action Plan update that's going to go on, the Transportation System Plan work that's happening, housing and microhousing, and Vision Eugene are the four focus areas of the Sustainability Commission. And we have a new chair, Kevin O'Brien, he's doing a great job so far. And then a new staff person, which most of you probably know, Chelsea Clinton, she was hired by the city to be the Sustainability Manager from the Budget Committee. And she's doing a marvelous job too. So she's the staff to the Sustainability Commission, although most commissions only have like 5% or 10% of the person's time, and, and so, but she's doing a wonderful job as well. Fairmount Neighborhood Meeting I attended the other, other night. The big issues, one of the big issues for them is the Capitol PUD, which is on top of the Hill, up on Capitol Boulevard, and quite controversial in that part of town. If you drive over there, you'll see a billion Capitol PUD with a slash through it. People are concerned about the safety of that road, and adding more houses, adding more houses up there adds more people on it, and more emergency vehicle issues and things like that, although one would say it's already unsafe for the people who live up there towards the end. And then, we also had an interesting presentation from the River Road Parks Department, talking about potentially wanting to put something on, get the council to look at that and put something on the ballot. The, I understand that the Parks Safety Committee is actually looking at one of the, one of the things that they'll be looking at is a special district, and so that'll be coming back to us. The other big issue in that area is the Knight Campus, which is occurring, it's going to be built right across the street from the University of Oregon. Right now, there's the Evergreen Indian Food Restaurant, and a Domino's, and a, and a couple of buildings in Looking Glass, and so all that area gets, gets, has been bought by the university, and that's where the Knight Campus is going to be built. It's going to be, I don't know, five or six-story buildings on, on that side of the campus, so it's going to be a pretty big deal. And so they're going to actually start taking stuff down and start doing stuff in January. So that's coming pretty faster than we thought. And then finally, I'll just comment on, on PowerPoint, or a presentation that Reagan just, just put together and did at the Fairmount Neighborhood on homelessness. And it was very good, and it was comprehensive about all the things that the city's doing, and how you can plug in. And also, watched the eight-minute video that's about the Rust Stop, so they put together. So it was, it was well done by her, and well received by the neighbors, so started a conversation about what to, to do next. And so, that presentation's available to everybody in every, any, any, any neighborhood association that she wants, she's looking for places to do it. So if you're interested, I'm going to hook her up with some of the ones in my, my ward.
Great, great. Any other councillors? Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, so Chris spurred me to remember a couple of important things, so the, the Square One fundraiser, so Square One's Emerald Village is being built in earnest on Railroad Avenue in the Whittaker, and folks can drive past there and see the buildings going up, the tiny houses, it's very cool. And I attended the Santa Clara Neighborhood Association Meeting, I think two weeks ago now, and Commissioner Bozovich was there, because one of their agenda items was to discuss the fact that the county commission is considering adopting a similar car camping ordinance to the one that the city has, and allowing car camping within the urban growth boundary, in unincorporated parts within the urban growth boundary. So he was there to engage in that conversation and hear what the Santa Clara folks, neighborhood group had to say about it, and it was a good conversation, and generally, very receptive. There was a couple of folks, including a pastor from a church who hosts Car Campers Now, and so they shared their experience as a church that has those folks there, and how they handle it. And then there was another person there, and I don't have my notes from the meeting, so I can't remember her name, but she has started an ad hoc homeless working group that includes, I think she lives in North Eugene, and then Santa Clara and River Road. So she came just kind of to build on what Reagan had spoken to folks about, just how to get involved in addressing the issue of homelessness, and what folks can do if that's something they want to get involved with in terms of city programming. And she passed around a clipboard, expecting maybe one or two folks to sign up, and her clipboard came back totally full of folks who were interested in learning more about what she was doing and staying and connected with her, so that was very encouraging. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that, at Lane County, Pearl Wolf, who has been an important staff member of the Human Services Commission, and before that, with Looking Glass, and before that, I think she might have worked for the city, I don't have her resume in front of me, but she's longtime homeless advocate and very valued staff person who is retiring, and she has been responsible for doing the HUD grant that Lane County shepherds through, and then the money that gets distributed throughout Eugene, Springfield, and parts of Lane County to provide housing and prevent homelessness. So she's been a super important person in this work, particularly in the last several years, and she's going to be very missed, and she's having a retirement party this week, and I just wanted to give her kudos over the airwaves.
Absolutely. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say that, back a few weeks ago now, we did have the meeting of the Parks Subcommittee. And in fact, one of the options that we're looking at is the, as Alan mentioned, the opportunity for a special district, although I think, based on the information I've heard so far, that's less, less likely an option, based on a couple of pieces, but we will get all of that information put, you know, through staff and through our work back to council in a way that we can kind of have a more thorough conversation about that at the appropriate time. I would also say, I understand entirely his feelings about his constituents in the Fairmount Neighborhood Councilor. Yeah, I attended the Northeast Neighbors Meeting here a couple of weeks ago in, in my ward, and I'd say it's, it's reserved to say that they were angry. Typically, neighborhood meetings draw dozen, couple dozen people to those sorts of things. There were probably at least 50 in the room, or more. Room was full. And I think it's accurate to say, most people in the room were very, very angry, and directed their anger predominantly towards staff. We did try to intercede a little bit on behalf of our staff, and talk about it a little bit more in detail. But the great concern they have, like yours are, are the, the amount of housing that are being crammed into the north part of town without adequate planning for the public facilities that will, that will absorb that congestion and that density. So with the most dangerous and congested intersection and facility in the state, Delta Belt Line, we're about to add 1,000 new houses. And understandably, some of the senior living areas there are very concerned about their capacity to be able to drive and travel and be in, and around those areas safely. And so, I'm hoping that, as time goes on here, the council is going to, with our Vision Zero program, be able to look more closely at what the impacts are of our decisions with regard to density and transportation issues, and how it affects some of those folks, because they're really quite angry and scared. So, thank you.
Okay, I have, I'm going to let Betty has another round, but I'm going to just add a couple of comments of my own. And first is, we do have this, there's a weird name for this, that doesn't say unimproved roads, but it says something else, zoning for something, it's on the calendar, it's actually on the agenda, so it's coming back. Can't think what that, we have some funny name for it.
They want to ask for on improved-
It is, it's that, but it's not what it's called on the agenda, it's called something, Zone of something. What is that?
Reimbursement.
Zone of Benefits, right? Who would know? That's what it's called.
That's not about us.
Not the same thing? Not the same thing?
No, no, that's not the same thing.
Okay, all right. Well, there we go, I really don't know that. Okay, that's the first one. The second, I really want to echo Claire's comments about Pearl Wolf and the retirement, and that's, she has been incredible, and she's an incredible repository for understanding the issues, and having explored a lot of the solutions around homelessness, and we will notice her absence, because she's got incredible institutional memory of what's happened, and, you know, knows the issue well. And just as a positive sign on that, just in case anyone didn't hear this, that the Human Services Commission has $50,000 of state funds that they can dedicate towards a feasibility study on a permanent shelter for the homeless. So we are, we sort of adjusted our meeting schedule last week in order to allow some time to plan for kind of a focused deliberation about sort of the first steps of how we would do that feasibility study, and who comes on board for that. So that conversation is happening, and in, as a substitute meeting, we had a group of advocates get together to talk about their concerns, about could we expand our emergency system for the wintertime. There are a lot of questions out there about what facilities might be available. One is the EWeb property, you know what it would take for that, one is whether community centers could be added to the Egan Warming System, a couple of other ideas that came out, so we need to keep exploring those. And then, Betty, to your question about El Rapa, I have narrowed the 10 applications down to four, I'm interviewing three of them tomorrow, or two of them tomorrow, one on Thursday, and the last one on Monday. So there will be an appointment for council to approve, October 9th is the goal. And I will make all the applications available, so you can look at the ones I chose and the ones that I didn't select to go on to the next round, and, you know, if you disagree, you have an option to do that. So it's coming. All right, and you have one more round, Betty.
Thank you.
You do too.
First, Emily and I were at the dinner for Japanese delegates from Sister City last night, and it was a nice occasion, they were happy to be here, there were eight women, and some of them spoke English very well, they had practiced a song to sing for us. And I continue to think that we don't sufficiently support our Sister City efforts, but anyway, it was a good occasion. And I wanted to say, this is kind of incidental, but the window is great up there, and I think that during, when we're not having a PowerPoint, we could raise that screen and make it even more wonderful. Things I'm hearing from, from constituents are things that they want the dog ban lifted, Keys there, they'll wonder why we're fooling around forever with Keyz Square naming, and a lot of people are interested in using the old LCC building for a homeless shelter, and wondering how soon we could do something about that. And just one person told me about this, but it's something people, many people have been concerned about in the past, is the predatory towing. If your car gets towed, you have to pay a huge amount of money to get it back, and some people cannot afford that. And one person told me she had just left her car for 20 minutes, and she didn't realize it was in, not allowed there, was towed, and she had, on a very limited budget, she had to pay, I think, $160. And if you don't pay that, then they charge you rent for every day. And I think that there should be something we could do about that, as a city. That's all, thank you.
Okay, Alan, you had one more round?
Yeah, I do also wanted to mention Pearl Wolf's retirement, she had a very clever, she preferred to call it creatively altering my daily life routine, as opposed to retirement, which I thought was clever. But she did just an amazing job, all the way back when I was the Chair of the Human Services Commission, she'd been like a stalwart person, always looked to, for advice and, you know, what to do, and she was amazingly successful in what she ended up doing. There's a couple of things, Christie, the follow-up work sessions to be scheduled, are those? Just to clarify what that is, those are, if we didn't quite finish the work session, or there's something to follow up on-
Additional follow-up, all of those things are listed there, and then the other work session polls to be scheduled are on the other side.
Yeah, they're the new ones voted on.
Yeah, and there's some other polls that aren't quite closed yet, but once they-
All right. So there's a couple that I would put on this list that are missing. One is the commercial setback standards, that was supposed to come back to us with some kind of solution. And the other one is inclusionary zoning, and then the third one I had was the, the unimproved roads, one that Mike had, I don't think we finished that one off either.
Yeah.
Or the annexation issue that I brought up three years ago.
We'll get, we'll get that added, so thank you.
I think that's a really good add to the, those are the kind of things that kind of fell through the cracks, potentially, and maybe you're working on, but we don't know that, because they're not on the list.
Okay, we round that up. Thank you all very much for those updates, and now we are ready for the first work session on arts and economic prosperity.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm Chrissy Hammond, I'm the interim Assistant City Manager, sitting in for John Reese tonight. And we have two work session, or two work session items are both 30-minute and informational only, and the first of them is arts and economic prosperity, and I'll turn it over to Library, Recreation and Cultural Services Director Renee Grube.
Oh, thank you, Chrissy. Hello, everybody. It's good to be here, and as you recall, we've been, over the year, last couple of years, discussing our economic prosperity. We know that there's a number of things that we want to continue doing, but there's some things that we've highlighted over time that we wanted to have deeper conversations with council with. And so, this is one, as Chrissy mentioned, one of two tonight, that are part of our baker's dozen. So as you recall, Greg, if Greg is still on the phone, he coined our number, our 13 items that we identified as the baker's dozen, and we've been going with that. Well, we haven't been bringing you donuts. I know, Al, you like those sweets.
First, the pie doesn't show up.
The pie doesn't-
Now, the donuts.
Continuing to disappoint you on that. So tonight, we're talking about investing in the creative industries, that component. Our presentation today is to share with you the results of a study that we've been working with Americans for the Arts. It's called the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study 5. And we've conducted this study locally with our partners, the University of Oregon, the Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene, Lane Arts Council, and the City of Eugene. And so, without me taking all the time, I'd like to introduce the Managing Director of the Arts and Business Alliance, John Berry, who's going to run through the information. So, John?
Thank you, thank you, Renee, and thank you all for having us here. I wanted at the outset, want to recognize the tremendous effort that the city put in, and Renee and the cultural services team really put up thousands of hours into helping us be the local study partners for the study. So thank you, Renee, for committing your group to it. As Renee mentioned, this study is conducted nationally by the Americans for the Arts, and it's done about every five years, so maybe you can tell by Arts and Economic Prosperity 5, this is the fifth time they've done that. Before we get to the results of that study, let me just set the stage, if you will, a bit, by drawing your attention to some data that I have on the screen and you have in front of you. This first set of figures is from a survey that the Americans for the Arts did last year. And I'll just highlight two numbers, those on the right-hand side of the screen here. First, 87% of Americans believe arts and culture are important to the quality of life. And that's probably not surprising to any of us, we all recognize the tremendous value that the arts play in, in quality of life. What may be a bit surprising is that 82% figure right next to it. And as you see, that's the percentage of Americans who believe arts and culture are important to local businesses and the economy. Now that belief is borne out by the data very strongly. And again, before we get to this particular study, I highlight some macroeconomic data from the Bureau for Economic Analysis, and they track spending within all US arts industries, and how that compares to other industries. Now, mind you, this includes all commercial activities in the arts, Hollywood, what happens on Broadway, commercial recordings, big concerts, pop concerts at stadiums, but perhaps surprisingly, arts and culture is 4.2% of GDP. So that's in fact, a larger industry nationally than mining, transportation, travel and tourism or utilities. So this belief that Americans have, 82% believing that the arts is important to the economy, is supported by the data. Now, turning to this study in particular, the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, this is very specific measurement of the economic impact that not-for-profit art and cultural organizations have around the country. So here, we're not talking about Broadway, we're not talking about the big Vegas shows, we're not talking about concerts at the Matthew Knight Arena, we're talking about performances and exhibits put on by organizations like our Eugene Symphony, or the Very Little Theater, or exhibits at the Schnitzer Museum, or cultural activities at the library. This study nationally is the most comprehensive look at the economic impact of this very important sector, nonprofit art and culture. And the Americans for the Arts works with 341 study regions around the country, the City of Eugene is one of those. And what happens is, the Americans for the Arts turn to those study partners in all 341 locations to gather data on the organizations in those, in each of those areas. They collect it all, they work with a highly respected group of economists at Georgia Tech University to analyze it, and they come back with not only national findings of the economic impact, but also localized findings. And before I get to the localized findings for us here in Eugene, just a quick note, that not only is this study the most comprehensive, and the amount of data they collect, but it is just broadly supported by many very well-known and respected organizations around the country. And so, I'll highlight just a few that may be relevant, the National League of Cities, the United States Conference of Mayors, and the International City and County Management Association, all not only endorse the study, but provide support for it. So enough of an introduction, let's get to the findings. And I'm very pleased to report that the nonprofit art and cultural organizations in Eugene contribute $62 million per year to the local economy. And you'll see from this slide, that breaks down into two big categories. The first one is that of the- The first one is that of the 62 million, 41 million is attributable directly to the organizations themselves. So this is a measure of how much the organizations take in and spend in our community. This includes all the operating budgets of the organizations that were surveyed. So the salaries, it includes paying for costumes being designed by local designers. It includes the cost of building the sets. It includes the cost of paying rent for their galleries and their performance spaces, and all of these other economic activities that make their performances possible. The remaining $21 million you see there is attributable to audience spending. And so, as we'll see in a bit, these organizations host over 1 million people at their performances every year right here in the City of Eugene. Well, dinner and a show go together. So if somebody goes to a performance, say, of a ballet, they most likely went out to dinner that evening, or perhaps they paid the babysitter, or they took public transportation in to see the show. All of those expenses, if you will, add up to $21 million per year. So again, altogether, those participating nonprofit art and cultural organizations contribute $62 million to our local economy each and every year. Now, that in turn supports 2,400 jobs. That is a bit of a surprise, at least to me it was. That's not an insignificant number. I mean, this is showing that the arts not only are food for our souls, but literally put food on the table for 2,400 million, or 2,400 people in our community. How do we compare to other areas around the country? As I said, there were 341 study regions. Eugene was one of those. Well, I'm, again, very pleased to say that the data bears out something we know in our gut, which is that the arts and culture are really important for us here in Eugene. And in fact, if you look, whether you measure this by total expenditures or jobs, if you compare Eugene to cities or regions of the similar size, our figures are more than twice as much as the median on a nationwide basis. And in fact, if you look at all 341 of those study regions, the amount of economic activity generated by arts and culture nonprofits is more than twice as much as the median. So we can hold our heads high, knowing that the arts in Eugene are not only making the city special from a cultural standpoint, but are contributing to the economy in a very significant way. I mentioned the 1.1 million audience members hosted by the nonprofit art organizations that took part in this survey. But I think what's also equally impressive is the number of volunteers who contribute their own time to these organizations. And this survey found that over 3,200 Euginians donate nearly 200,000 volunteer hours every year to support these organizations. And when you put a value on that, it's about $4.6 million. And that's in addition to that $62 million figure I mentioned earlier. So when we talk about community in the city, and we're all very proud of the community coming together, here is where it literally happens, at the nonprofit, the performances, the productions, and just the day-to-day activities of the nonprofit art and cultural organizations that call Eugene home. I just want to highlight another area of the study, which is that it does look at how many of those 1.1 million attendees are local versus tourist, if you will. And for us in Eugene, 88% of attendees at these performances and art and cultural events are local. And in the context of this study, that happened, just happens to be defined as anybody residing within Lain County. 12% are non-local. You put that together, and perhaps not surprising, and you look at the amount that the average attendee spends per performance, non-local spends about $42, whereas a local attendee spends about $16. Now, again, not surprising because most likely somebody coming from outside Lain County will stay at a hotel and have greater travel expenses. They might have a nicer meal because it's a bigger trip for them. But I like to look at these two facts as two sides to the coin. One is, we can be very proud that our local residents are finding such great value in these organizations and the performances they put on, that 88% patronize our local art scene. If you look at the research, we all, as consumers, have part of our discretionary spending goes to, if you will, entertainment or cultural activities. Well, we can be very proud that that hard-earned money is staying right here locally. On the other hand, the fact that 12% of participants, of attendees, are traveling to Eugene, and as you can see there, 78% of them come just specifically for an arts or cultural event, we know that we're bringing dollars into our community. So a nice kind of yin and yang, two sides to the coin, if you will. And then if you look, this, I can go through this very quickly. You can look at it at your leisure a bit later, but this just breaks down how that money is spent, that $21 million breaks down. And as I mentioned earlier, a large part of it is meals and snacks, so this is your dinner out when you go to a show. But there is money that goes towards transportation, towards lodging, souvenirs, and then that other category is the babysitters, or maybe it's the new shirt you buy to go to a special performance of the opera, or something similar to that. So my point here is just that we don't think often about the economic impact of the arts, and we definitely don't think that it has a broad-based impact. So many other businesses and industries in our city, to a certain extent, depend on our arts and cultural nonprofits to provide income for their own services that they perform. One last figure that may be of interest is that the study does measure the revenues that go to state and local governments. And for us in Eugene, it's about $3.9 million. And I might add that about $2.4 million of that is to the local governments. So this is due to the fact that these nonprofit art organizations pay rent, part of which goes to property tax base. Their employees will pay some income taxes that go to the state coffers and all the rest. So again, not an insignificant amount of government revenue derived from the economic activity of nonprofit art organizations. Maybe in the nature of time, I won't go into too much of the methodology. I did mention that it's a very robust, data-driven process that has been refined by the Americans for the Arts over 25 years. The data is a combination of financial data collected from the nonprofit art organizations based on their balance sheets and their P&Ls, but it's also a result of audience intercept surveys. So again, in large part, thanks to the city's effort, we spent a good deal of 2015 and 16 collecting data from audience members at many performances around town, asking them very specific questions. What is your home zip code? How much did you spend tonight? Would you have come to this performance if it was held somewhere else? These type of questions. 892 responses that were sent to the Americans for the Arts who analyzed them. So very robust data set. And as I mentioned, the economic analysis carried out by a well-known economist at Georgia Tech. So we can be very confident in these findings. I just want to recognize those organizations who took part with us here in Eugene, and so I list them here. And without going through all of them, I think I'd make two points. One is, you can see there's a very good representation of the breadth of arts and cultural organizations we are fortunate to have in town, from the largest organizations such as the symphony, the Oregon Bach Festival, down to smaller organizations, Upstart Crow Theater, Very Little Theater. So very good representation of the types and diversity of arts and cultural organizations we have in town. The other point I would make here is there were 40 nonprofit groups that participated this year with our study, which is the most we've ever had, and that's great. But it's only about 50% of the total number of arts and cultural organizations in our community. All the data I've gone through is based on these 40. It wasn't extrapolated. So we can be very confident that these numbers are conservative, and to the extent you use them to advocate for support of the arts and cultural organizations, which we hope you will, you can say surely that it certainly is, the economic impact certainly is larger than what's measured by this study because it only measures those organizations that So that's a very quick run-through of what is an 80-page report. We do have the full report available on our website. I'm happy to provide individual briefings for all of you. I do want to mention two events we have coming up. First, next Tuesday, Randy Cohen, who's the Vice President for the Americans for the Arts, responsible for this study nationwide, will be here in Eugene. He's doing a tour of Oregon as a guest of the Oregon Arts Commission, and we have him for a few hours. And we're having a reception next Tuesday night for community civic and business leaders, and certainly would like to invite all of you to that. And then on November 3rd, I know many of you have been our guests at the Braava Breakfast, we'll be highlighting the studies again there. So if you feel like this would be of interest to your constituents, or again, to yourself, please join us for those two events.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much. That's great. Thank you for a really wonderful report. Are there counselors that want to be in a queue? I have Chris, Betty, other comments? Alan? All right, Chris, take it away.
Thank you. Really impressive report. I mean, the numbers are really quite eye-opening. I think that's a really good thing. And when I look at the list of arts organizations that are included in the previous slide, there's a lot of organizations we're all familiar with. And I think the one thing I would add, which actually creates even more value here, is something I'm interested in, which are the new arts. You know, these are the traditional arts, you know, theater, dance, ballet, symphony, but the new arts include digital, film, and these represent a significant source of income as well. And I'm not talking about, you know, digital production in terms of video games and things like that, which is more on the business side, which is a huge industry here. But I'm talking about the new arts. Film production, there's a significant amount of film production going on. There's a significant film community here, and that's a major piece of it. Digital production in terms of both music and visual arts is also a significant area. So in addition to these great things you've already got, when you start adding in the new arts, you're talking about an even greater impact on the economy, not only influencing an older group of consumers, which many of these arts are basically appealing to a more affluent and an older group of people. The new arts are appealing to a much younger and more accessible group of people. So if you want to be able to say, we want our arts community to be as diverse and inclusive as possible, I think one way to achieve that is to also incorporate the new arts into it, because that way you're reaching an even broader segment of the community and the population as a whole. So thank you for this work. Adding that in makes it even more valuable, which lends even greater credence to our broadband investment. So it's broadband that allows some of these things to take place. So business and arts are always together. I've always said that that quality of livelihood and quality of life are not exclusive, they're actually co-dependent.
Betty?
Thank you. I agree with all that. They also contribute to public safety, I would think. If people are busy doing things of that sort, they are causing trouble. But I did have a question about the Jacobs Gallery. I saw that's still listed. Is there a plan to revive Jacobs Gallery?
You know, the Jacobs Gallery was the nonprofit, and that is not coming back. We're in the midst of doing some renovation in the bottom of the Holt Center because of some environmental conditions that we had there. And so there will be art in that space, and so hang tight, and you'll see what comes back at some point.
Will have a new name then?
No, it'll always be the Maury Jacobs Community Room or Maury Jacobs Gallery. That was not changing. That will continue to be there. Thank you. You're welcome.
Alan?
So when you're doing this, John, really good presentation. I like the color. I really like it. Can read the slides because there's only two on this. When you do all these numbers and it says Eugene, that's the metro area, or is it just the city of Eugene?
It's a good question. It's just the city.
Oh, okay.
So the measurement is performances or activities happening within the city boundaries. So slight clarification, even if an organization resides in Springfield, if they do a performance in Eugene, it's captured. But a Eugene-based organization that performs, say, in Springfield, that would not be captured.
So there's a whole nother layer of stuff that happens in Springfield that adds to this, that is in the local economy.
Absolutely.
What does that look like?
We don't have an estimate for that, but it's been a topic. If you look at the map, you'll notice many different color maps. Some areas choose to do just within city limits, some choose to do metropolitan areas. You know, our limitation has been our partners to date, and the City of Eugene being such a strong partner has really allowed us to focus on the city. But certainly, there's been a lot of discussion, shouldn't we include at least Springfield, if not even all of Lain County? And I can tell you that's on the table for discussion for AEP 6 in four and a half years.
Good. Yeah, I mean, this speaks loudly to the fact that arts and culture is a big part of our economy, and it drives a lot of economic spending and economic prosperity in the area. The almost 200,000 volunteer hours is pretty startling number. That's a lot of people doing a lot of things for the arts, out of love for arts in the community, so. And then there's a lot of spending.
Any other?
Yep, thank you. Yes, all those people, and none of them are getting rich off of it either.
Yeah.
For sure. So yeah, great report. Really appreciate it. And I just wanted to comment off of what Counselor Zelenka said. If you did decide, if you have this debate about, should it just be Eugene metro, should it be Eugene Springfield, should it be all of Lain County? I have to say, I really appreciate the Eugene-only perspective. I think it's very helpful. I mean, it's important to know what's going on, you know, regionally, but sometimes we can only get our data regionally, and it can be a little frustrating if we really want to dial down on what are we, as a city, doing to make a difference in this realm. And so getting the Eugene-specific information is very, very valuable.
Is it a comment and a question? But I actually work at one of these 40, so, and so I saw your number, 2,400 jobs, and they're full-time. I know you're making equivalency, and I know most of us at my cultural institution are not full-time. So I think it'd be really interesting to see how many jobs there really are, because I suspect it's much higher than this 2,400 number. I mean, I know you probably don't have it, but just in the future, I think it's nice to see how many lives are being touched, even if they're not full-time.
I just, I love this report also, and it was very readable, and you did a great job of summarizing a lot of data. The other piece that occurs to me is the sort of reverberations in terms of education, which is, we have counted on our arts community really to augment what is available for students in our school system. And I don't know whether, how you quantify that, but it's definitely a critical piece of how we look at education now, is students having an opportunity to participate with a music organization of some sort or a theatrical organization. So very powerful. And also very powerful to think of our for-profit arts endeavors, which is kind of another piece that's not counted here as well. And then as we think about sort of the innovation hub concept and how we bring, you know, creative problem solvers together, business and arts, you know, I imagine, not to exhaust you with the possible data, but you know, there seem to be endless permutations of how the arts really have an incredible impact on the community. So thank you for this very, very interesting report. Any other, anybody need another round? Okay, thank you so much.
And now we are ready for the--
There.
Oh, yes, Greg, sorry.
Can I request that we do the consent calendar at the end of the next presentation before the 7:30 meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
We may pull one if the annexation, so there's time for the forum.
Got you.
In case that comes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, next up, we, a conversation about mapping in Eugene for economic development. I'll just turn it over to Ann Feifield and Will Doughty.
All right, this is on, okay, good. Good evening. I'm Ann Feifield, and this is Will Doughty. I'm the Economic Development Planner in the Community Development Division. And we're here to introduce you to an analysis conducted by the Planning and Development Department that makes up the booklet that you received in your packet, The Mapping Value in Eugene, Oregon. This project was a collaboration between the Planning Division and the Community Development Division. When we started the project, Will was in the Planning Division, but we are very pleased that he's recently moved to the Community Development Division, and he's now the Urban Development Manager. Did I get that right? Okay, good. A third member of our team is not here this evening, and that's Sarah Zaleski. Sarah is a GIS technician, and she made, was responsible for all of the maps that you see in this booklet. The analysis aligns-- The analysis aligns with the Eugene-specific metrics, which is one of the baker's dozen of economic prosperity priorities. You talked about Eugene-specific metrics and we're here to talk to you about them tonight. So in our presentation tonight, we'll walk you through the history behind the analysis, how we got to creating it, the content of the booklet, and then how the city should be able to use this analysis. So for the history behind this, in mid-2015, the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects brought a speaker to Eugene. His name is Joe Minicazi and he works at a firm called Urban3, based out of Asheville, North Carolina. Urban3 has built a strong reputation by effectively using design to present complex data in a simple but a very meaningful way. The firm has worked for local governments across the US and their primary focus is to show how a community's built environment affects its tax revenues. The firm has become well-known for maps that show the taxable value of a community on a per-acre basis. And here's a handful of work products that they've produced from around the country. We have High Point, North Carolina, Austin, Texas, Des Moines, Iowa, and Durango, Colorado. The cities range in size from less than 20,000 in Durango to almost a million in Austin, but the maps all show how efficiently a community uses its land affects its tax revenues. After we saw Joe Minicazi's talk in 2015, the Planning Department looked into conducting a similar analysis using in-house staff. And so Will and Sarah and I started to work on the analysis in late 2015. Pretty quickly, Sarah produced some draft maps that showed taxes per acre. We took these maps and presented the analysis to a few groups in the city, asking for constructive criticism. We met with the Willamette Valley GIS user group, Envision Eugene TRG, staff within many different departments in the city. We also met with the county assessor, which helped to make sure we were interpreting the data correctly. Based on the feedback, we learned we needed to provide context for the maps. We wanted to make sure that anyone looking at the maps could have a broader understanding of what tax revenue does and how it's generated. And the booklet you have in your packet aims to provide that context. We think that this analysis is similar to a website like Mint.com that helps an individual understand where they spend their money. Many of us don't notice how much money we spend per month on a particular item, like eating out, just that the money's mostly gone by the end of the month. Websites like this summarize an individual's expenses and graphically show where an individual's money goes. Mint.com is not judging how you spend your money, it's just giving you information. And like Mint.com can show you where your money goes, this analysis can show where the city's money comes from. It's not making a judgment about it, it's just providing info. And so now I'm going to hand it over to Will, who will walk you through the booklet.
Okay. I'm going to take you page by page, just to explain how the parts of it go together and also for the benefit of anyone who's watching here or at their homes. We've given the booklet the subtitle, "A Practical Guide to Understanding Taxes, Land Use, and Quality of Life in a Great City in the Northwest." And turning the page, that's one of the first things we emphasize. We admit right up front that spending 15 minutes understanding city finances is not the way that many people choose to spend their time. However, quality of life is one of the big unifiers in our community. So we want to show that there's a connection between those two things. Even if you'd rather be out hiking a beaut, we think it's important that you know how to keep that same experience financially sustainable for future generations. So diving into the content. We start very simply, explaining that city services depend on funding, much of which is from property taxes. We also want to remind people of the diversity and breadth of these services, from things like emergency services to the ones that are easier to take for granted, like streetlights. One of the critical pieces of any educational effort is to build up a necessary vocabulary. And so we use these two pages to try to sum up basically the entire Oregon taxation system. Now, as you're probably aware, there are a few different ways to measure the value of a property, including the real market value, the assessed value, and the taxable value. In this, we've chosen to focus on taxable value because it takes into consideration that some properties, like the one we're in right now, are tax-exempt and not contributing property taxes for city services. On the next page, we introduce what is really the core principle of the whole analysis, the comparison of property value. Now, we all work with value comparisons all the time. If you spend any time shopping, you have a pretty good sense of the price of bananas, or cheese, or salmon, or whatever it is that you like to buy. But when I say you have a pretty good sense of the price, I mean the price per pound. It's not helpful to talk about the price of a bunch of bananas, or a wedge of cheese, or a packet of fish, because that doesn't tell you how much food you're buying. Even though food is purchased by the bunch or the package, the way that you compare value is by talking about the price per pound. There can be a tendency to forget this when it comes to real estate. Sometimes cities will focus on the largest property taxpayers or the largest real estate transactions, but neither of these should be confused with the measurement of value. On the next few charts, we compare four property types. A typical single-family house, a drive-through coffee kiosk, a four-story downtown office building, and a big-box-style retail store. The first chart shows what happens when you try to compare real estate based only on the simple dollar amount. Even if it looks as if you're comparing the value of these four properties, the size of the property with the big-box store in it is so much larger than that of the rest that you're no longer comparing apples to apples. Now, if you flip to the next page, we've repeated that chart again on the left side, but we've added another chart next to it. Just like bananas are measured by pounds, property is measured by acres. When you compare the taxable value per acre, you get a significantly different picture than the more superficial comparison to the left. To illustrate this point in another way, we ask the reader to imagine this scenario. Let's say that there's a piece of property that's exactly 12.19 acres. That's the size of our big-box store and its parking lot. Now, we know that it could be developed just like that and yield about $11.5 million in taxable value. But you have options. Instead of that one store, you could also choose to develop it as over 50 houses or nearly 30 coffee kiosks, after you allow some land for streets and sidewalks. From a strictly financial perspective, the big-box store has a slight edge on the houses, is nearly double the value of the kiosks. But the downtown office building has the highest value overall. 29 buildings can fit on that property, again, after you allow the land for streets and sidewalks. And at about $3 million apiece, it yields over $80 million of taxable value, or seven times that of the big-box store. So that's the same kind of analysis as the one on the facing page, but it's put in terms of options and decision-making. And so we hope that's a helpful way for people to grasp the concepts. So now imagine that you took every city, or every property in the city, and you put it into one of these charts. And that's exactly what we did. Sarah calculated the taxable value per acre of every property and then she used the magic of GIS to put it onto this map. The colors follow the natural breaks in the data so that you can better compare different locations. So hopefully you can all follow the geography. There's I-5 on the right. Downtown is roughly the middle, where the, all the colorful spikes are. Just to the east of it is the University of Oregon, where there's no taxable value. And then you can see the other neighborhoods and some other landmarks around. And I also want to point out, so here, you can see the pointer, kind of in the middle, there's a blue area, that's the Valley River Center. This is the Seneca Sustainable Energy Facility. And up here is Crescent Village. Three things we often get asked about. What you can see is that all the different neighborhoods of the city have a range of results. Gray is the lowest tier on the chart and it's scattered across the city, as are the browns, greens, blues, as you move progressively upwards in value. At this point, it's helpful to remember how the math works. The map shows the taxable value per acre of each property, which is another way of saying the taxable value divided by the acres. So if two properties have the same acreage, the one with the higher taxable value will be in the higher tier on the chart. Or if two properties have the same taxable value, the one that's on less land will be in the higher tier on the chart. So at this point, we've really come back full circle. This is the kind of map that Urban3 produces, the kind that Ann showed you at the beginning. But we think that by laying this foundation of education, this work, or this map, it can become more accessible to everybody in the community. I'm going to flip quickly through these next couple of pages. They're the same map, but just from different angles, which we thought was interesting and helpful to people to see different parts of the city. Now, this map is a different way of looking at the data. It addresses a question that was posed to us by the Envision Eugene Technical Resource Group. They pointed out that there's a slight imbalance in the analysis when you compare different properties, particularly between more urban locations and more suburban locations. For example, the downtown office building may not need to provide its own parking because there could be a garage around the corner. Whereas the more suburban location, the office building is probably going to have to provide its own parking lot. So Sarah came up with a cartographic solution. She basically dropped a giant grid on the whole city. And then she calculated the taxable value inside each one of those squares. And so what you get here is not just individual property by property, but it's the property taken into the, taking into account its context. So the result is that the map isn't quite as striking as the previous ones because there's streets that are included in all the, going into the acreage of all of the squares and other non-taxable properties. But the general trend of the chart is still kind of the same. The last map in the booklet has a few additional annotations to provide more orientation. We've identified the spikes in downtown, in midtown, and the neighborhoods around the university. We've also identified Nincosi Brewing on the left, which was the only property outside of the downtown or university area that rose into the top tier on our map. We close the booklet where we started, reaffirming that this analysis is only a means to an end, that is improving or sustaining quality of life in Eugene. As much as we want people to understand where the money for services comes from, money can never be the only lens we use for making decisions. And I'll turn it back to Ann to wrap up.
We've made this booklet available to the public in electronic form on the city's website so that anyone who finds the topic interesting will be able to access it. We intend to use the website as a place where we can update the analysis and add different analyses to it so it can continue to be a source of information for the community. For example, we'll be able to update that basic map and show how it changes over time. There are changes every year. On this side, the left side of the image shows 2014 and the right in 2016. A notable change can be seen in the upper-left corner, where you can see a relatively high property value that appears in 2016. And that's Seneca's Sustainable Energy Facility after its enterprise zone exemption ended. We can also use this site to show different data sets. We have a few examples of draft maps here tonight. This one shows city of Eugene taxes. All of the maps in the booklet show taxable value per acre, and this is city of Eugene taxes. The city of Eugene tax does not directly correlate to taxable value because of the properties in the River Road-Santa Clara area that are not inside the city limits. This map shows employment, total employment, jobs per acre. We've combined data from individual addresses into larger hexagon, it's kind of like that grid map. But we had to prevent private data about individual employers being shown. That's confidential data maintained by the Employment Department, so this kind of mushes it together. And the data show that jobs are concentrated near the UO and the downtown on a per-acre basis. Those multi-floor buildings hold a lot of people. And then this map shows total payroll. The size of the spike is total payroll. And then the colors show the average wage. So you can see in the lower, towards the bottom on the west, is where there's some of those firms that are out there, next to the Hynekz facility and those other firms that are out there. Those are some of the higher-wage jobs in the community. But the bulk of the payroll is in the downtown and near the university. The maps in this booklet show us how the built environment affects our tax revenue. It does not show us how it affects our costs. A next phase of work would give us more insight into how development types do affect the city's ability to pay for long-term maintenance of roads and parks and to provide public safety services. We have not done that cost analysis, but we're looking at working with Urban3 to conduct such an analysis. This map shows work Urban3 did in a different community that mapped both the costs and the revenues. And it shows some properties have quite higher, much higher costs than they generate in property tax revenue. And so the intent of our analysis here is to help the community better understand tax revenue, in the same way a personal money management website helps an individual understand how they're spending money. And as the booklet ends, we want to note that money is not the only thing that matters. For example, these maps all show that city parks don't generate tax revenue, but parks are hugely important to our quality of life. And as you know, the city of Eugene uses a triple-bottom-line analysis to make sure that policy decisions take into account economics, social equity, and the environment. This property tax analysis in these maps enhances our understanding of our tax revenue so that the community can achieve the goal of fair, stable, and adequate financial resources to fund all of the services that make this a good community to live in. We'll take any questions you have.
Thank you so much. This is such interesting work and compelling and really great food for thought. So are there questions from councilors? Oh, I've got Mike and I've got Chris, others? Alan? Okay. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to break protocol and just do this.
Thank you.
I have to tell you, this is very impressive to me. I have asked for things like this for a very long time. And while I understand and agree with the statement that both of you made, that money can never be the only analysis on which we make decisions and on which we base a good community, it is my opinion that we have almost never done so before. We've never made decisions with information like this. In other words, we've never said, "Okay, ask the questions if we wanted to be more efficient about how we used land in our community for the sake of being able to afford the services that we all want? What sort of kinds, types of land, in what ways and in what places would we gravitate towards?" And this helps us make those decisions. And it's awesome. So I, for one, am just ecstatic seeing this because I think it helps us to much more intelligent decision-making. I would say that there are other types of data I've asked for in the past that are right up your alley and I hope maybe someday we get there. In almost every place you see nationally, certainly statewide, we measure a thing called GDP. We don't measure gross domestic product. What do we manufacture and sell to others and bring the money back here? We don't measure that at the county level. We don't measure it at the city level. We don't measure it locally anywhere. So we don't know how we're doing year-to-year. We don't know how we do comparatively. And that's one of the measurements that I think we really ought to have. Tim Dewey does a thing that he does with an index that's kind of like that, but it's not really GDP. So you guys are on a great track. This is wonderful and I want to study it some more and get more information from this. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Chris?
Everything that Mike said, very compelling information. When I first saw this and said values, I thought, "Oh, we're going to get into a moral conversation." No, it's not. We're talking dollars. Much easier conversation. I can remember, oh God, this has got to be a dozen years ago, I attended a conference which was held by one of the park and recreation gurus. Renee probably remembers who it is. I've forgotten his name. And he--
Compton.
That's him. And he had done an analysis all those years ago of the return you get from different kinds of properties that you have in a community versus what it costs to deliver services to those. And I won't quote the numbers because it was many years ago, but his basic analysis had shown that if you look at the taxable revenue you get from different kinds of properties versus what it costs to deliver services, whether it's transportation, utilities, you know, whatever, police, fire, there's a ratio. And this kind of got at what you're talking about wanting to do and why I think it's critically important that we do it because it's the other side of the equation. And he had learned, or had discovered through his research, that industrial property provides the greatest ratio of return because it, you get, as he showed here, high tax revenue and a relatively small amount of services you have to deliver to a single property like that. That commercial was the next highest in terms of the revenue you got versus the-- actually, it was lower. It actually costs more to deliver services to commercial property than you got in revenue. But it was still on the positive. the amount you got in taxable revenue versus what it cost to service that area was actually in a negative ratio. So, if, if you have a single-family home neighborhood, you're not getting as much tax revenue as it's costing you to deliver services to that area. That's not to say we don't like single-family home residential neighborhoods, they're very important. But what it does argue is you need a balance in order for one sector to offset the other sector and provide an overall continuation of services. You can't have all of one or all of the other. And I thought it was very intriguing information, and I would love to see the next step that you do, collecting information about the impact of delivering services, and begin to generate that kind of a comparison between what do we get versus what it costs to deliver. Not that I'm looking to try to get rid of one sector versus another, but to try to say, "How can we create the best, most harmonized balance of all those different sectors by making sure that they work constructively together and, and not against each other?"
Thank you. Alan?
This is really very cool information, and, and I really appreciate the work that went into this. It is fun with graphs, but it's really a lot of data behind this. I will point out that most of the spikes are on Ward III, but--
Five.
So this is actually the-- Would this be different if you grabbed density of-- work--
It correlates pretty closely to density, but not 100% because of, the library is a very dense facility, but it doesn't generate tax revenue. But, and then, and the university is, has a lot of, a fair amount of density that doesn't generate tax revenue. But for the most part, it's highly correlated, if you takes out, I take out those non-taxable properties.
Yeah, I think this, these graphs answer once and for all the perennial question of, "Why should I care about downtown?" If you're wondering why we focus a great deal of time and effort on downtown, these graphs show why. If you're wondering why fixing downtown is important, these graphs show why. It's the economic engine of our city and our whole local area. And so, having a prosperous and effective working downtown is really important. So, if you're out in the hinterlands, a lot of the things that you enjoy get paid for by the value of the stuff from downtown, because the property values pay for, the parks pay for all these other different things. So, having prosperous downtown is very important. I think this, these graphs really underscore that quite a bit.
Thank you. Claire?
Thank you.
That and N'Kosi.
Yes. My word. I noticed that, I was like, "I wonder if that's N'Kosi." So, thank you very much. I'm, I'm very pleased to see the enthusiasm from my fellow councilors for this information. I actually first saw Mr. Minicosi, I think he pronounces it, presentation about three years ago, when he was brought here to town, and then also at a conference that I attended with city staff on urban development. And at the time, I turned to city staff and said, "Where are our maps? Where are our maps? We need to do these maps." And they said, "We're doing, working on them, we're working on them." So, it's great to see this here and to see that it, you know, does have the effect that I thought it might have, which is exactly what you're hearing. You know, it's a very compelling way of telling a story about how the choices we make as a city influence the bottom line for our tax base, and then also about how we manage those resources we get from, from those decisions. So I think doing the second part of the analysis, which is the cost piece that you mentioned, about the cost of providing city services to various types of properties, so that we can really see how our choices for how and where we provide for new growth or redevelopment impact our overall city's health. And as other councilors have pointed out, that doesn't mean we're going to, you know, get rid of our single-family housing, or think that that's not very valuable, but I think it's important for us to be, to have these rational pieces of data, so as we look at future growth. And I also think it would be very helpful and important, and Councilor Zlinka got at this a little bit, is to find a place within this, maybe not in this first draft, but in, in the next iteration, to do some differentiation between multifamily housing versus other kinds of high-rise buildings, because this was really focused on the office building. But you know, we're seeing a lot of multifamily downtown and other places, and so thinking about just a little differentiation, so we can look at that in a little more detail, I think would be very valuable, given our Envision Eugene work. Thank you.
Any other comments? I also just, I wanted to, as I've heard other people comment, I thought of something else, which is that in my many, many months of canvassing, I often had this conversation at the doorstep, and people were very taken by surprise that there was this per-acre difference in how buildings, how we develop. And I, I guess I want to toss it out to my colleagues around the table, that you have an opportunity to use this document at neighborhood association meetings, or anything else you're doing in your neighborhood, to kind of spur that kind of conversation and understanding, because I just, my non-scientific study says, there, there are a lot of questions around this in the community. So, thank you very much for giving us this incredible tool, wonderful work, and very helpful to us all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think we have time for the consent calendar. With the--
Counselor President.
With the counsel president, do you want to--
I propose-- Move approval of the consent calendar without item in C?
Second?
Item C is the annexation--
Annexation piece.
--piece. We've run before where people testified after we approved it. So, we're not doing that.
So that's, so we can just vote on that as stated?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the consent calendar minus item C? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Greg?
Yes.
Eight. There we go. Thank you very much. All right, I think that brings us to a close, and see you in 40 minutes.